Thank you and good evening. We're going to recess the special meeting immediately after this meeting. So I can welcome you to the City Council regular meeting for Tuesday, August 6, 2024 at 6:00 PM. And we are going to start off with a pledge to the flag. We have two lovely ladies here. We have Leah Peel and her sister Shannon Peel to lead us from Pacific School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So don't go away. Don't go away. And I want to introduce your mom. So Jessam-
Hello, I'm Jessamine Peel. I am these lovely girl's daughter. We are obviously living here in Manhattan Beach and love it. Both these girls are attending MBMS later this month. We do a lot of Parks and Rec. Shannon's been doing the tennis camps. And we also, other things we like to do, we like to travel. We love California. They're fourth generation Southern California girls. My grandma was born here in Southern California, out in the Anaheim area. So we really love the beach. We take advantage of that and our beautiful community here. So thank you for having us.
Thank you. Well, we have something for you here.
Official city pins.
So we have official city pins and we have some certificates of recognition. Now, good things come in three, and they have a great dog by the name of Tommy. Can anybody guess what school Dad and Mom went to? Who went- And Tommy is a Vishla, right?
Yes.
And so what else does he have in common with you?
We both have red hair.
Ah, great. So thank you so much for coming. I really appreciate it. And have a great rest of the summer. Okay? Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lesser. Councilmember Napolitano. Councilmember Napolitano.
Steve?
Here.
Can you hear that?
Councilmember Montgomery?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hoerth?
Here.
Mayor Franklin?
Here.
So I'm also pleased on our ceremonial calendar to present certificates of recognition to Natalie and Vesta Sung for their extraordinary efforts and contributions to American Red Cross during the Maui wildfire fires. And they're Manhattan Beach residents. They were there. So on behalf of the City Council and my colleagues here, we want to present you with these certificates of recognition. You can meet me up here? Face everybody here. And I want to put you on the spot. If you could just tell us a little bit about your adventure and also your background and how that helped you prepare for helping out.
So a year ago, coming this Thursday, believe it or not, it'll have been a year, we were on vacation there and got caught up in the 80, 90 mile an hour winds. Five fires on the island, bounced around to five different parking lots, finally ended up at the Red Cross parking lot to find over 1,200 people basically scrambling, bum rushing the facility, the high school, to get help. Only one newer Red Cross person there did a stellar job, but just overwhelmed. And Natalie and I decided we would just step up since I have that background, having done work with CERT and with Red Cross during COVID. So it was kind of, we were at the wrong place at the right time, shall we say? And it was really pretty amazing spending 10 days there. Just to give you an idea of how nasty it really was, I mean, I think it took a good seven, eight months before I stopped seeing burned people in my daily life where I went. It leaves a mark on you. And there are people there. We were just there in June, and it's kind of like the second wave of the disaster. We still need people there. We need people to continue to prepare like we are doing here with the city. While the media does a lot of if it bleeds, it leads. The real story is with the city councils there, the Conapoli, the Capitol and at Lahaina. They were the ones that helped us put everything together, along with the Department of Education, the high school itself, Red Cross, and obviously the Kaiser and some of the other doctors and such. But this was a community effort. So thank you for what you do. Keep it up. And this could be us if the big one hits.
So could you just explain a little bit about CERT, what the initials mean?
Oh, yeah. So CERT, we have our Community Emergency Response Team. And we have our very own liaison here, Amanda McLennan right here. And Frank Chiella is our program manager, if you will. This is under the Manhattan Beach Fire Department. Come on out. Twice a year, we have these incredible classes to teach you how to, in an emergency, prepare for your family. And then if you're doing all right in an emergency, you go prepare and help your neighbors, and then you help your community. And it's amazing because that's exactly what happened to us. We went from vacationers to victims, first responders to second responders, all in about 20 hours. So that's how fast it goes. Yeah. And I couldn't have done it without this one, I gotta tell you. I threw her in the back and had her organize the dormitory. She dealt with all the burned folks with the stories she heard over and over again and everything. It's just extraordinary.
I'll just say that it was an incredible experience. I'll never forget the people that I met there, hearing their stories. Like, we had people come in with only the clothes on their back. And one lady, she literally only had some cat food and her cat. People walking four days with burns all over their feet just to get to the shelter. And seeing the community really just come together, bringing in food, all the donations was truly incredible from people who were displaced when they were on vacation to people who were just absolutely struck and with nothing left.
Go vacation there. They need you.
Well, thank you so much for sharing your story. Many of us probably in this room have gone through CERT training for CPR. So it's very valuable to have. You never know when you're going to be called on. We're all out walking and having a good time and emergencies sprout up all over the place. So again, we just want to thank you for your courage and being willing to roll up your sleeves and get in there and do the hard work. So we're very proud of you.
And Mr. Mayor, if we could get a picture of the entire council?
Yes.
With the extraordinary residents.
Yes, please. And we have pins for you two?
Yeah, we have pins. A very small token.
One of us dressed, two of us dressed in Hawaiian.
Oh, perfect. Oh, yeah. There you go. Yeah, let's take a picture of you guys. And she's got her pin already. We're good. I love the plug for CERT. If you haven't done the class, it's incredible. We really are going to be on our own. There's not going to be enough. And it, well, it's sort of fun. I was kind of terrified the whole time. But that's how I roll. But then I got over it.
And here you are.
And here I am.
Great. Well, let's move on to item number E, which is the approval of the agenda and waiver of full reading of ordinances.
Second.
So moved, Your Honor.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Montgomery and seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Tom. I always want to put Thomas in there.
That's okay.
But Hoerth? And can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Lesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Hoerth?
Yep.
Mayor Franklin?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, so now we go to item number F, which is City Council and Community Organization Announcements of Upcoming Events.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Josh Murray. I'm here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. I'd like to invite the community to enjoy a hilariously entertaining afternoon with comedy juggler Michael Rayner on Saturday, August 10, from 4:00 to 5:00 PM. Join us for a wacky juggling show with Michael Rayner, who has appeared on America's Got Talent, Sesame Street, and The Late Show with David Letterman. You will laugh, you will be amazed, and you will see a spinning cheeseburger. This event is intended for all ages, and registration is available on our website, lacountylibrary.org. And again, it's this upcoming Saturday, August 10, from 4:00 to 5:00. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Josh. Anybody else?
Hello, Mayor, City Council members. My name's Jill McCurry, and I'm with Manhattan Village Shopping Center. I'm here on behalf of the Manhattan Beach Chamber of Commerce and wanted to announce some events that we have coming up that we would like to invite everyone to. The first thing that we have tomorrow is the Board of Directors installation with the mayor's lunch. Looking forward to seeing what Mayor Franklin is going to share with us. It is at Tin Roof at 11:30. Again, that's tomorrow. We still have availability. If you have forgotten to buy your tickets, you can do so on the Manhattan Beach Chamber website. The next thing that we have going on this week is we have a Power Lunch and Networking Event this Thursday at 11:30. It's going to be at the Jocelyn Center, and it's titled "The Hidden Secrets of Service and Countermanagement," presented by Richard Chase. So you can also purchase tickets on the website. That evening- Oh, I don't have any more time?
Oh. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. We have a lot going on this week, so thank you. We have the Young and Emerging Professionals Mixer this Thursday, and that group's focus is on career advancement and networking for professionals of all ages. So everyone is young and emerging, no matter what your age is. You can join us at 5:30 at Denton and Denton. That's going to be that location. And then one other thing looking ahead is we have a Community Outreach Breakfast. We're going to be discussing or hearing about how to effectively navigate the permit process. And that is going to be given by Taylene, the new City Acting Manager, and also with Seth Gajar, who's with Accelerate MB. And that is going to be on September 16 at 8:30 at the MB Studios. So thank you, guys. And you can go to the manhattanbeachchamber.com website for all the information.
Great. Thank you. You don't want to leave for this one. This is where it gets started. She went long. I'm not going to go long, I promise you.
Tell them where you're from.
Bobby, we appreciate you not harassing our residents.
Mayor, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, City Council members, city officials, congratulations. My name is Bobby Bell. I am the Dedicated Education Recycling Educator for the City of Manhattan Beach for WM, with previously known as Waste Management. I'm just here to remind everybody that this coming Saturday, August 10, we have our Free Paper Shredding Event at Miracosta High School. It'll be from 9 to 11 o'clock. All Manhattan Beach residents and businesses are welcome to come out. Two banker-sized boxes, shred safely and securely for free. Wish you guys all a blessed evening. Good night.
Great. Thank you, Bobby.
Good evening, Mayor Franklin, honorable council members. My name's Katie Daherty. I'm a city engineer. I wanted to provide a brief update on the full closure of Parking Structure Lot 3, which is located here in downtown at Morningside Drive and 12th Street. My team has been monitoring the structure regularly. The third level was closed earlier this summer due to observations of corrosion that required specialist assessment. On July 30, the engineering staff and the consultant structural engineer conducted an onsite assessment. Heavy corrosion was observed in several of the steel columns and the staircases, resulting in a recommendation to close the structure immediately or shore the areas where the corrosion is observed due to the unsafe condition. In the interest of public safety, the structure was closed completely to vehicles and people later that day. It is currently fenced off, including the adjacent public right of way that is below the cantilevered portions of the structure. Staff is working closely with the structural engineer to determine next steps. Redesign and reconstruction of the structure is a City Council Work Plan item. Preliminary efforts for that project are already underway, and staff anticipates returning to council with an update this fall on that. I'm available for questions if you have any.
Colleagues? Okay, thank you. But if residents do have a question, sorry, where would you suggest that we, that they reach either Public Works or?
Yeah, there is a dedicated website and email address set up for this project. It's lot3@manhattanbeach.gov.
Lot3@manhattanbeach.gov.
That's correct.
And Mr. Mayor, I have a question then.
Yeah.
And I know you don't have the, an actual date in mind, but we don't yet know, I think I want to express that we don't yet know what is actually going to permanently happen there. That will be a series of community, there'll be workshops, there'll be outreach. There's different ideas that will be, you know, considered. But there will be also temporary probably stuff that will be discussed in the fall, correct?
Yeah, both of those are correct. So we're working now with our engineer to figure out exactly what needs to happen immediately with the structure. So that's happening. And also, there's the effort for the long-term redesign, redevelopment-
For some people, understand. Thank you.
Project, yes.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? How about on Zoom?
There's no request on Zoom.
Okay, great. So I'm sorry, colleagues. Yeah, sorry.
I may be anticipating what Councilmember Montgomery is going to say, but I wanted to explain for members of the public as to why Councilmember Montgomery, our city attorney, and I are wearing our Hawaiian shirts tonight. And that is because our city manager will be retiring after 35 years. At our last council meeting, there was an honoring of him, but he who is not in a Hawaiian shirt usually wears one when he's not in a public meeting. And it's our way of saying thank you to him for all that he's given our city for over 35 years. Thank you.
Aloha. Says the one guy not wearing a Hawaiian shirt in the room. I think, Council, that's part of what I was going to say, but the second part is, how many of you actually went down to Sixth Man this weekend and saw what it was like? Besides 10 of us? All right, there you go. So a shout out to not just Parks and Rec, but PD and Fire and the residents and businesses. It was busy from Thursday on, but well-managed busy. It's a difference. It wasn't outrageously, I would say, overwhelming to downtown or the residents. We could all see it. And I can tell the difference, having CSC down there, the checkpoints made a big difference, I thought, as far as structure goes, and checking bags, everything else. It's tough if people still want to bring glass bottles to the beach. Amazing as it sounds, it still happens, folks. So I think a shout out goes all the way around. I know the big difference it makes when it's well-managed. And having CSC onsite to help our PD made a big difference to all of us being down there and watching our own residents play and enjoy themselves in a safe environment and also supporting our local businesses was a big, big difference. And a warm-up for the MB Open to follow. So that's my shout out for the week.
Kudos. Am I on? Yeah. Kudos to Jay Sekley, right? There you go. Sorry. Oh, really want you to hear these words. Kudos to Jay Sekley, who, you know, is carrying on the tradition of his father. And he cares so much about this event and about it going well. And it's just so special to have this in our community and support it. I'm so glad it is successful. And as one of our colleagues is famous for saying, Sixth Man is not a crime.
I knew that would be.
All right. Speaking of that colleague, would you like to make any comments?
Yeah, I'd like to do better next year than we did this year.
I didn't quite hear that.
He said he wants to do better next year.
Oh, okay. Well, you did better than I did, so there you go.
I don't know.
Anybody else here? Okay, so I would like to make an announcement, and it has to do with the 2024 Paris Olympics. We're very proud to have two Manhattan Beach residents who participated. One is Daniel Golobovic, and he's a Miracosta grad. I guess the parents were from Australia. He actually swam, or he actually ran the decathlon event for Australia. He finished in 19th place, and it was very exciting to see him there and mention the fact that he comes from our hometown. And then the other one is Taylor Spivey. And Taylor also went to Miracosta, graduated. We might know her mom, Bonnie Spivey. She ran a swim instructing business here in Manhattan Beach. I remember my two kids went. They were six and seven at the time, and Taylor, I think, was five. Taylor Spivey was five, and she was the assistant. And even then, she was going in and out of that water like you wouldn't believe. And she ran the, she silver medaled in the mixed relay team for the triathlon, for the Olympic triathlon. So-
There's a third.
Oh, yeah, please.
Gosh. Jordan Rainey, who is a Miracosta grad, also then went to Stanford, is on the women's water polo team, and they won today. And Jordan absolutely controlled that game. I mean, and it's so thrilling to see these young women who are sponsored by Flavor Flav, you know, do so well. But yeah, Jordan Rainey's all over it.
Have to explain, they don't know who that is.
They gotta go look it up.
Yeah.
Just Google it, man, Flavor Flav.
And we will, at a future council meeting, when they're in town, we'll bring them so that everybody can meet them. And I'm sure they got some great, they got some great stories. So moving on to announcements, item number two, City Manager Mel.
Yes, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Onyx Jones, who is our interim Finance Director. Onyx, would you like to stand up and let everybody see? Onyx, of course, is filling in behind Steve Sherrillian, who retired last month. You have a Master's in Accountancy from Wichita State. Most recently, she worked at City of Culver City as the Assistant City Manager, Finance Director, and City Treasurer, with like roles in City of Pomona as well. She brings a wealth of experience in all facets of finance, bond financing and things like that. Will put you to some good use. But thank you for leading the Finance Department here while the recruitment is ongoing and we find the next permanent manager or director. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, and welcome, Onyx.
I'd love to. So- Yeah, go ahead. So yes, Talene, of course, is our Community Development Director. But with my departure at the end of next week, Talene has been appointed the Acting City Manager while a recruitment goes on for the permanent replacement. Talene, of course, has already got her hands full with all the development in town and housing and all the other activities that go on in that department. But I know she has a lot of bandwidth and certainly has drive and determination to take this role on. So I'll be giving her my support, just a phone call away anytime you need it. And I'm sure the rest of you will join me in that. But thank you, Talene, for stepping up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Talene. And another comment?
Mr. Mayor, maybe through the City Manager, can we also introduce our Acting Community Development Director, who I see is in the room?
Ryan, your turn. Ryan is, of course, our building official and is filling in behind Talene, and will do an awesome job like he does every other, every day of the week. So thank you, Ryan.
Terrific. Absolutely. Thank you all. You really can't imagine just how lucky we are and fortunate to have such great employees to stand up and take on those extra duties. So we move to item number G, Public Comments, three minutes per person. So speakers may provide public comments on any matter that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council, including items on the agenda. However, if you speak at public comments now, you cannot speak during the public comment time when that item comes before the City Council. So please state your name and-
Louis Pastor. Of April of this month, or this year, I celebrated 68 years of being here in Manhattan Beach. And I'm not going to go through nostalgic stuff, how it used to be, you know, school district, fiscal responsibility, and all that sort of thing. Whether I make it the next 68 years is starting to bother me. And here's, maybe, different levels of government can start talking to one another. Here's the local papers I've been reading. We got the sales tax. We have the recent parcel tax. They now beat cities once a $30 million bond issue. And Prop 2, coming up, wants $10 billion. So again, my fear is, can I sustain myself? And my dad used to say, there's not a money problem, there's a spending problem. I hope you will address that to find out if we really need certain things. Okay? South Bay Unified School District, when I was going to school here from first grade through high school, they had a little office the size of this place on Pier Avenue. They sustained the district. There was no parcel tax. There was no this tax. We didn't have a wine festival. We didn't have an education foundation. So I'm starting to think that maybe there is a spending problem, if you could look into that. When I worked at Hughes Aircraft, one of the first things they did, when things were going south, they looked at various positions, administration, and all that sort of thing, and found out there was a lot of positions that weren't needed, that could do away with and be more efficient company. Of course, later, they turned it over to General Motors, who was worse and destroyed the company. Also, on the thing of taxes, I will address something my dad said some time ago in Liberty Village, and you and I, Joe, talked about this. Why do we in Liberty Village still have to water city property? Why, when the cement comes up because of a tree, we have to pay for that? Why do we have the burden? So if you're going to pass all these taxes and stuff, hopefully you'll look east of Palvada and look at the Liberty Village folks, especially as old geezers going, wow, we've been doing this 68 years, paying for that cement, paying for that. And I talked to a young man when he was out there fixing our sidewalk. He said, you're the only city in the South Bay where they charge the residents.
That's not true.
Please look into that. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pastor.
Hi, everybody. My name's Terry Chase. I live at 50224th Street. And Richard Montgomery, I don't know if you remember, we had a conversation about noise from LAX-
Yes, remember.
-in September of last year. And I was the only civilian on that call. I mean, LAX made it very difficult to find about the meeting that they were going to have to talk about noise abation. And I got to commend Richard. I mean, he was on it. He said some good things. I mean, the people in charge were saying, oh, they spent a lot of time talking about landings. I don't care about the landings. It's the takeoffs that are incredibly loud. And I happen to live right across the street from Grandview Elementary School. I moved here in 2009. I love the community. And I'm going to talk about noise, and hopefully I can get through this in three minutes. But when I got here in 2009, we would walk around the neighborhood in the middle of the night or the day. It was quiet. Now, we had the kids, you know, in the school, and I love them. I mean, it's a great school. I enjoyed the activity and all of that. Didn't particularly care for all the parents that had to drive their kids to school every day, because I had trouble getting out of my garage, because I'm right on the corner of Grandview and 24th Street. But fine. Then all of a sudden, somewhere between 2009 and today, I mean, they changed the flight path for LAX. And I don't know everything about it, but I know the noise started becoming annoying. Okay? And I just, I'm half deaf. I've got hearing aids. I lost the bass noises. I can hear great. Men, I can hear great. Women, I have a tough time. I really got to lean in. So I put up with the construction across the street of Grandview- The noise was incredible, but I knew that was going to end. I didn't think it was going to last quite as long as it did, and I'm grateful for what happened. I mean, it's a very nice deal. I mean, the school is much improved. One thing I really like is a lot of the parents are now picking their kids up down on Blanch, I believe, and there's fewer parents picking their kids up right across the street from me. So I can actually get out of my garage at 8:30 in the morning. Okay, so I put up with that, and I'm grateful. It had an end date. Over the weekend, anybody hear the boom, 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 SoFi Stadium? That's seven miles away. Now, I'm asking the City Council, Mayor Franklin, I'm asking you to less prevent that crap from happening again. They got one scheduled next year at this time. That group has got to knock it off. It's this electronic stuff, this rap stuff with a lot of bass. People were complaining all over the city of Manhattan Beach, in El Segundo, in Hawthorne, some people in Marina Del Rey, and Redondo Beach. Can you know how far it is? Bass noises travel an incredible distance. We got to get ahead of this. You know, Hawthorne, the police department was called, I think the Manhattan Police Department got tons of calls, I would imagine. Ridiculous. Let's get ahead of it, let's prevent them from do it. I don't know, class action lawsuit, whatever you got to do. They cannot be doing that to our neighborhood. But there again, three days, it was over. And by the way, my wife has very good hearing.
Mr. Chase, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up.
Okay, we'll wrap up real quick. All I'm asking, when Richard Montgomery was talking to us on LAX, the solution was have the incoming flights come in on the southbound runways and have the outgoing flights leave on the northbound runways. Do something.
Okay.
Do something different with the flight path. This was a peaceful, nice area, quiet, and now, I don't have air conditioning. I gotta shut up the windows at night so my wife can sleep. Like I said, I just take my, my hearing aids out, and I'm cool.
Thank you, sir.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Next.
Yes, I would like to also complain...
Got to jump, quick.
I would like to also complain about the noise. There's been an enormous amount of noise that I've had to deal with over the summer. But I think fortunately, in two weeks when he goes back to college, it'll all be gone.
I got it.
Something that we can help improve house prices with is talking to some builders about some properties, and they're saying because the permitting process takes so long, that they have to build in more costs, which drives down the price of lots. So if there's anything we can do to speed up the building process, would be very helpful. And another thing that I've heard from several builders is they're talking about the planning departments becoming more and more punitive. Before, when you'd say a deck size was, had to be this big. Now they're measuring from inside the deck wall, as far as how much square footage you have to have your deck. And now it's no longer three feet from the setback of your property line is in the sand section. Now it's three feet from the inset of the retaining wall. So all these things that keep going on, keep reducing and pushing back our buildings and making our buildings more expensive, more, and you're pushing them back further. There used to be, if you had an upward sloping lot, there was a huge advantage to having the property, because you put the garage underneath, pull the house out over it, and you got a bigger backyard. Now, because of the three-story effect, you're only allowed to have one story above your garage, and you push your house back further. So there's a lot of things, and then, you know, the 24-foot wall effect, which makes absolutely zero sense in the sand section, because you're allowed to build to 30 feet. But if your lot is wider than 35 feet, you can only go up 24 feet, they have to go in three feet, then go back up again. And there's, I think, about 50 or 60 lots that are 35 feet or wider in the sand section, and a lot of them are half lots. So you're being very punitive, people with half lots in that area. So maybe there's some things we can do in the planning department, make it a little bit more, you know, engaging, and pull our houses forward and let people have more backyards. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Sir?
Hello, my name's John Plantigan. I'm owner, operator of Wright Tribe that's over, over next to our parking lot three that's being demolished. This is my partner, Lauren Plodnick. She runs it with me, and you can find us there most days. But I just wanted to say and come here today and thank you guys for considering us with the shift, with the building, and the demolition of everything, and how it'll go down, and just to say that we've really, being that our business is so impacted, and we've been such a good part of the community, and we love the community, and it's nice to, like, gained everybody's, everybody's following and everything. But a lot of people are coming to us to talk about the parking garage, and we're getting a lot of public opinion and questions and concerns about just general safety, general timeline, of course, parking, you know, all these issues that I can't say that we have the best answers for, obviously. I don't think anybody does because of the urgency of what, what it is, the parking structure itself. But I'd just like to say that we want to stay in communication and just make sure that everybody knows our faces, and that when you see us in our offices or what have you, you'll know who we are. But that, and just that hopefully we can find a way to, you know, make it safe and tear it down, and just put in a surface parking lot in the meantime, so that the public doesn't feel like it's, it's just getting its feet dragged, or it has some other interests involved, or whether it'll be demolished, or whether it'll be rebuilt, and, you know, hopefully we can get further faster with its, with its demolition and its going back to normal. I mean, even just today, when the fence went in, there was a big kind of issue with trash trucks and different things. And I can say it's nice that we're there, and that we're owner, operators, because we are there, and we also live downtown. So we, you know, we get to interact with a lot of the public, and we get to see what goes on with, with traffic flow and with general, with people, and, you know, people have a lot to say. So we just want to be able to communicate with them and be honest about what's happening. But thank you, guys, and appreciate you keeping us in mind as it moves forward.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could ask a clarifying question of Johnny? So you're, you'll have to go back up to the podium now. So your business is Wright Tribe, and what, what, where does your front door open onto?
Our front door opens onto Center Place. So it is essentially that alley where the, the parking lot is overhanging above.
Yeah, so that's, yeah.
And I know that there is yet to see the full report on, on what it is to be demoed and, and all that, so we'll see, and hopefully we can continue to be there.
Okay. Thank you.
Tell them about the email address they have set up.
Oh, it was, he did, he heard it. He was here.
Yeah. Okay, next. Okay, seeing no more here. How about online?
There's no request via Zoom.
Okay, so, oh, yes.
To answer Terry Chase's question about the LAX flyover, is Terry still here? 2003, Terry, as Congress changed the rules on Proton, Next Gen, it allows the planes to take off differently. You hear more noise than I've ever heard before, because the frequency and takeoff order has changed. That's why we're hearing more and more. The ones you hear at nighttime, LAX. The ones you're screaming over your head at 6 o'clock in the morning until sun, until 12 o'clock at night, that is Hawthorne Airport. That is not LAX. The low-flying screamer jets, Hawthorne. The loud, big jets, LAX. Anyone unsure about that process, email me, armontgomery@manhattanbeach.gov. I'll tell you exactly the difference, who you call, who you email about problems with planes when they fly over, because it will not go away. During football season, it will get worse. So just give a heads up there. Yes, and the second thing I was going to say, Your Honor, was Louis still here, Pastor? No, Louis?
Oh, yes, he is.
Just so you'll know, MBUSD is a separate elected official body. They have their own elected people. They don't report to the city. If you want to contact them about their budget, you need to contact them directly, okay? That's how it works. So I wish, just so you know, I'm just telling you. Just telling you how it works, just so you'll know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
It's not a give and take. I'll talk to you afterwards. And the last thing I was going to tell you was that, all right, second thing I'm going to say was, the issue you brought up about the tax on sidewalks, every property owner has that, and it's citywide. It's not just East Side. I know, because I'm an East Side guy. So just tell you how it works across that. And finally, Your Honor, the last thing I'll bring up, those of you who wonder, we're talking about the sales tax, the half-cent, the half-cent sales tax you're hearing about all over the place? That is because we have our own infrastructure needs. How many know about Lot 3, right? That's a $15 million project to replace it to today's standards. 15, 1-5, not 3, 15 million. Where's that money going to come from? So I could do a half a sales tax, where 61% of the people that actually pay it are not Manhattan residents. So someone brought the argument up, saying, Richard, we shouldn't tax our own people. We should let it go. Let the county have that money for homelessness. How many here, but just don't tell me your name, by show of hands, believe the homeless problem in LA is being controlled by LA County and managing their money well? Anyone? That's what I thought. Zero. So why would I give a group that's not functioning well with homelessness half a cent more forever? It never sunsets, folks. It goes on forever. We have our own needs here. And we're going to use the half-cent sales tax. If we do not pass it in our own city, it automatically goes to the county. Our own needs or county, you decide. It's that simple. I'll stop there, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no more, we're going to close public comments and go on to item number H, the Consent Calendar. Looking for a motion to approve.
Second, Montgomery.
So we have a motion by Mayor Protem Hoerth, and seconded by Councilmember Montgomery. Do we have a vote?
Councilmember Lesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoerth?
Yes.
Mayor Franklin?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, so moving on to item number I, Items Removed From the Consent Calendar. There are none. Item number J, Public Hearings, there are none. And item K, General Business. So speaking of the ballot measure, we have item number eight, and we are going to hear from City Manager Mo.
Actually, you're going to hear from Assistant to the City Manager, George Gabriel, who is leading this project. And George will give you the overview of the resolutions that are before you for approval this evening, for your consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Honorable Mayor Franklin, members of the City Council, George Gabriel, Assistant to the City Manager. Tonight, before you, as a result out of a direction from the July 16, 2024 City Council meeting, where the City Council received a report on a sales tax feasibility survey and took some actions. Most notably, City Council directed staff to return at this meeting with the required resolutions to place a ballot measure establishing a one-half-cent sales tax at the November 5, 2024 general municipal election, and to establish a subcommittee of Mayor Protem Hoerth and Councilmember Montgomery to help with the development of a community-led public outreach campaign regarding the measure. Consistent with Council direction, staff has drafted those resolutions, and they are attached to the City Council Agenda Packet, which proposes a one-half-cent sales tax. Attached specifically to Resolution Number 240089 is the ordinance for the voters to consider to establish a transactions and use tax, which is also known as a sales tax. The resolution also specifies the ballot language that is proposed and consistent with the sales tax feasibility survey. Additionally, it should be noted that Section 6 of the resolution provides that the City Council may authorize up to five council members to file arguments for or against the measure. Staff is looking for direction if any council members would like to file an argument in accordance with the attached form. Additionally, City Council may request the LA County Registrar/Recorder County Clerk to sign a particular letter to the city-initiated ballot. The attached form allows the council to choose a first, second, and third letter designation, as well as letter choices, and those that the City Council does not want. The ad hoc subcommittee comprised of Mayor Protem Hoerth and Councilmember Montgomery discussed some ideas. Three primary options with slogans for council consideration are the following, KFL, Keep Funding Local, PMB, Protect MB, as well as third, MMB, Move MB Forward. Staff recommends that the City Council direct the city clerk to inform the county of his preference for a ballot letter designation. The deadline is August 14, but obviously this is the last council meeting before then, so we'll need some direction tonight. Also, the council could decide which the ballot letter designations they do not want, as indicated earlier. Lastly, consistent with council direction, the council subcommittee are assisting with the development of a community-led public outreach campaign regarding the measure. Both council members may record, may report on this at their discretion, but should they find supporters of the measure, they will need to file an argument of the support of the measure by August 16 in accordance with the county's deadlines, so they can be listed as an official potential supporter of the ballot measure. I say that because there's some changes to some of the requirements this year. There was some recent legislation passed by the state legislature called AB 1416, which now under measures, once the ballot language is listed, supporters and opponents of the measure will be listed as well. And so that's something that's going to be quite different on this election cycle. And so if the City Council chooses, they may be listed as a supporter of the measure as well, or other community nonprofits and such. So with that being said, staff recommends that the City Council consider the following actions, adopting the resolution, which basically places the ballot measure, adopting a resolution providing for the filing of rebuttal arguments for the city measure, and thirdly, directing the city clerk to inform the county of its preference for a ballot measure designation for the city's sales tax measure. With that being said, I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, colleagues. Mayor Protem Hoerth?
No, I...
Oh.
I, I don't have, sorry, I don't have questions at this time. Thank you. Sorry.
Councilmember Napolitano?
No questions, Your Honor.
Okay. So I have a question. This is one thing that I kind of know the answer to, but it always amazes me, from what I've learned, is we don't, the city does not get their full share of the sales tax revenue for internet or sales that are delivered on trucks to our residents. So, for example, if you're going onto Amazon, you make a purchase, there's a sales tax. That's not treated the same way, I believe, as going into a store. Going into a store, we would get our full 1% of the total sale as our share of the sales tax. But from internet sales, it sort of goes into this nebulous pool, and somehow, I don't even know how we get a check or what that totals. So first of all, Georgia, and am I correct in that?
You're correct, you know, to reference a lot of the stories that City Manager Bruce Moes brought up regularly about shopping locally. I think it's always preferred, in terms of the city's sales tax, to shop at your, at a local dealer. And I think one of the examples that City Manager Bruce Moes brought up is shopping your local Toyota dealer. But that being said, sales tax generally, ones that are done through online sales are all allocated in a county pool, and the county and the state together divvies up, and the city gets a portion of that for those, let's say, Amazon purchases that you're referencing. Rather, when you go into a brick and mortar store, 1% of those sales tax dollars are guaranteed to go to the city of Manhattan Beach.
So those delivery vans and the like, they're going on our roads, right? Putting wear and tear on our, our infrastructure. Has there been any discussion about trying to work with our elected officials to change that? I mean, certainly it can be tracked where, you know, where the sales are coming from and the residents who are paying the money. And as long as we're providing those trucks a, you know, nice road to drive on, we should be getting our fair share.
No, no discussions that I'm aware of.
I'm not aware of any either. However, of course, they pay, unless they're electric, they're paying gas tax, which comes back to us, that goes towards our road infrastructure, so it's not a total loss.
I'm not aware of any either. However, uh, of course, they pay, unless they're electric, they're paying gas tax, which comes back to us, that goes towards our road infrastructure, so it's not a total loss, but it's not, uh, there's no discussion going on on that.
Okay.
I mean, that's an issue that gets brought up at Congress a lot too, right? And.
Yeah.
But I, I, I'm told Amazon has a lot of money to spend on lobbyists, right? So.
Somebody's paying the, uh, the sales tax and they're not keeping it. Somebody's getting it, so. So how are we doing, like, on maximizing our revenues from all available sources, like parking meters and, and parking tickets and the like? I, I thought I saw the, our budget just came out and I saw that there was a, a drop in our actual revenue in citations. I mean, are, are we doing the best that we can to maximize our, you know, city revenue?
Yeah, parking citations can be a bit of a challenge because obvi, obviously we have to have staff to, to issue those, and we've had difficulty filling some community service officer positions. Uh, but we do our best to, to, uh, issue citations appropriately when there are violations. Uh, it's not viewed as a revenue generator. It's more of a compliance tool for us. Uh, but of course, we do get significant revenue from it. Uh, so, you know, we, we monitor it on a monthly basis. We get reports from finance, uh, that we utilize to identify areas where perhaps we're not giving maximum effort and look for reasons why that, uh, may be occurring and what we can do to fix it.
Okay, so we're no longer outsourcing, uh, citations, parking citations.
We are not.
Yeah, okay. And then, uh, some residents have expressed concerns about, uh, the fact that this money, this additional sales tax would be going into the general fund, and, uh, we want it to be for infrastructure. What, what kind of, uh, guide rails are we gonna put up to ensure that, you know, are we gonna make this an enterprise fund type of thing? Or something to, we, we can say, yes, we collected that money, that additional money on the sales tax, and here are the infrastructure projects it's gonna go towards.
Yes, you're correct. It is a general tax, uh, and all, all those funds are fungible, and it would go into a general use fund of some sort, whether that's general fund or capital improvement fund. However, the council always has the ability to designate any of the funds in the general fund for particular purposes. Uh, and that can, can change from one council to the next. You probably recall that we have some of our hotel bed tax dedicated to the CIP fund. Helps pay the debt service on the police fire facility here. Uh, so that's a tool that's available to you that as you determine how you want to designate those funds, you can do that.
Okay, great, thank you. Colleagues, any more questions? Yep, Councilmember Lesser?
I, I think it is important, even though this is a recap of other exchanges we've had in council, to just confirm again, we have tremendous upcoming capital improvement needs. In fact, I saw a number today, and I was wondering if you can confirm it, the City Manager, Assistant City Manager Gabriel, of two hundred million in upcoming infrastructure costs?
Correct.
How would we otherwise pay for those capital improvements? And over what period of time are we talking about to come up with the funds under current facilities to pay for them?
Well, oftentimes, it's from surplus, uh, that's generated from the general fund. Typically, there are, uh, some leftover dollars, revenues over expenditures at the end of the year. But it's not the way that we should be funding these important capital projects, and that's the purpose of, uh, looking for additional revenue that could be then perhaps bonded against so that we could accelerate some of these projects, or these projects such as Lot Three, where, uh, you know, uh, two, two or three or four years ago, we hadn't anticipated the timing on.
Can you reiterate what you just mentioned in passing, which is bonding? I had had an exchange with our now former finance director about why, because que, questions have been asked of me by residents, why can't we just go out for a bond to pay for some of this infrastructure that we're talking about, including, as was mentioned earlier, our parking Lot Three, where we're just guessing now at how much it may cost. It may cost fifteen million, it may cost more. But why don't we go out for just a bond for that as well as other infrastructure?
You know, it's, it's very similar to a home mortgage, and you need to have income to pay the home mortgage. Uh, we can bond, but we need to show revenue, uh, to pay the debt service on that. And currently, we don't have a lot of capacity, uh, to go out and bond because we don't have a lot of leftover cash.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so, um, public comments for this item? I believe, limited to.
Uh, cars, the sales tax is based on where the car is registered, which most likely is your house. So it doesn't matter where you buy it. It matters where the registration goes to, which is typically your house. So therefore, if someone buys a car down in San Diego, and they live here, and they register it here, they're paying sales tax based on here. I'd looked it up and, did that sound right? I don't know. You Googled it. Oh, well, then it's right.
Wow. And the government doesn't like.
So for a transaction and use tax, which is what this would, uh, sorry, may I answer?
Yeah.
Uh, for a transaction and use tax, which is what the proposed ballot measure would address, yes, it is where the tax is assessed on where the, uh, where the car will be registered. Uh, however, that being said, the current one percent the city see, receives right now, those sales tax dollars, um, the pla, the point of sale is what the city receives. So if a car is bought at a, the Toyota on Spolveda, for example, the city gets one percent. But if the city imposes a transaction and use tax, the city will not get the additional half cent. They will be getting, um, they will be getting whatever car is registered in the city. So it's a slight nuance on sales tax, uh, and that's what the difference is between a typical sales tax and a transaction and use tax, which is known as a sales tax. Sorry for that complicated explanation.
Great, thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna open it, uh, additional public comments? How about, uh, online?
We have Steve Shirelian.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Can you guys hear me okay?
Hold on just a second. Can everybody hear that? Okay. Yeah, yeah, turn it up just a little bit here, please. Okay. Great, okay. Go ahead and proceed. Thank you.
All right, try it again. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Is that better?
Yep.
Uh, thank you. Uh, first of all, I just wanna thank council and compliment council for considering this measure. Uh, this goes back to working through the council work plan of two thousand twenty-three, uh, as well as through the finance subcommittee, and it takes, uh, takes a while to get it to this point. So, uh, I'm glad that, uh, we're here talking about this tonight. I heard a lot of good things about, you know, where does money come from, what do we do with this, uh, money coming in? So to me, there's, again, there's a lot of capital needs, there's limited new revenue sources. But I think the most important thing is, uh, as City Manager Mo, uh, mentioned, that council does develop a policy at some point, uh, sooner than later, uh, you know, once, once the outcome is, uh, uh, out there, that, and if it does pass, and, uh, what to do with that, uh, with the next budget cycle. And, uh, with that being said, I'm all for move Manhattan Beach forward. That's my vote. So I will, uh, leave it at that, and thank you all for your time.
Great, thank you.
There's no additional requests on Zoom.
Okay, so we're gonna close public comments on this item? Oh, did you have?
No, I'm, I'm not, I just wanna make council comment.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so.
Um.
Yeah, so council discussion.
Why, thank you. I mean, I, Robert's order would allow me to make a motion to, uh, support this, and so I shall do so. Um, we, I believe that what we're gonna have to do, um, I do wanna make some comments. Uh, I wanna make a motion to place a ballot measure on November fifth, twenty twenty-four general municipal election. Uh, that would establish one half cent sales tax. Um, and I think we should take, even though we, I think we should take each of these letters individually. So that's my motion, and.
Second.
Thank you, and I, but I have some comments. Thank you, sir. Um, and, uh, my comments are, and I, I appreciate, uh, former Director, uh, Shirelian talking about how long, um, the finance subcommittee and people in his department have been working on this, because this is not just something that comes out of nowhere. This is a lot of people, um, continuing what has been incredible fiscal management in this city. How, how many cities in the country have a triple A bond rating, Director Mo, do you know?
I don't know what the number is, but it's, it's not that.
It's really small. We have a triple A bond. What's that? Google, right? Can you Google that? Um, and, and, and one of those reasons is, uh, thanks to, uh, retiring City Manager Mo, who used to be the Finance Director, and his very conservative, uh, fiscal management practices. Um, and so this is not something our council just does lightly. Uh, but I, I remember I first joined the council for the first time with David Lesser in two thousand eleven. And, uh, Richard is fond of talking about the fun days of the recession, uh, and, and how we had to cut so many things, and we had to, you know, we had to really, you know, it was terrible for everybody. And because of the, um, conservative decisions by the council and the Finance Director, our city made it through. Now, when I joined in two thousand eleven, we made it through, but we had a Jocelyn Center that needed spit and polish to hold it together and make it safe, right? We didn't have any money for facilities improvement. And, you know, this is Manhattan Beach, where you know how much the homes go for, right? Um, we could not, we couldn't make, uh, infrastructure improvements. Now, we did make some policy decisions that were also smart, like we set up a pension obligation fund that we, you know, or a reserve fund, pension reserve fund, uh, setting aside, what, a million dollars or more than that now? Um, you know, that, but we took, that was money that could now not be used for infrastructure. And so, um, this is a smart, smart thing to do. It is the kind of tax that, as everyone has said, is gonna be borne more by visitors than people who live here. Um, uh, nothing against visitors, but, you know, it's, it's a really smart thing to do. So we can consider parking lot three, we can consider beautification of downtown, we can consider other, um, acquisitions or infrastructure. And guess what? We build new facilities that, you know, fire department or the library or any facilities that we build, that actually goes on our balance sheet, if you will. That makes us, those are assets, right? So that only solidifies our, uh, financial position. So I see this, um, in all of those terms, and so that's why, that, those are some of the reasons I'm voting to move this forward. Um, and we can talk about the letter designations before or later, but that's my motion. And we have a second.
Okay.
I'm still the second.
Yeah. Did, did you want to comment?
You want comments?
Yeah.
Uh, I think my colleague, uh, Mayor Protem Hoerth said it the way I wanna say it, but I'll even give you another example that people don't really see how their money where it goes. Underground, you don't see it. Sewing water lines, you don't see it. Street gets paved in front of you, you may see that. Otherwise, you don't see anything. You wonder where the money goes. How about the pier railing project? Then we pay attention, our, do pier railings? For years, people raised, now all of a sudden there, no one says a word about it. It's amazing. But you get a trick question, I'm gonna come down the line at you to get asked, how many miles or how many acres of parks is Manhattan Beach out? One hundred twenty-two. How many miles do we have? Anybody know? Miles of roads? I won't give that one away. But the main thing is, I would say two things, um, that, Marjul knows this. The one percent sales tax has been around for a while. Shop MB has been a slogan since I've been living here. One percent of what you buy here stays here. This tax doesn't apply, folks, to your medicine prescriptions or, or groceries. It's not taxable. Doesn't make a difference there. But I think Steve said it well, is that it's revenue, five million a year is what we're gonna get. We reject, if this tax passes, it's five million a year in revenue that we're gonna get, right? Take the county out of it. That's five million a year, whether a lot three costs fifteen million, or David's right, maybe or then twenty million. Who knows it'll be? It's gonna cost something. And that money needs to come here to our own backyard, not go to the county. So I can't make it easy on you. We need a dedicated revenue stream that Bruce slash Teline slash Onyx is gonna be able to look at and say, we have five million more a year to pay towards these projects. We can't count on something else getting money for us without raising rates on our own people. This is totally different. We do it inside, keep the money here. Those who talk about local control, this is exactly where you put your money, where your mouth is. Local control. You wanna control your own money, where it goes, this is how you do it. So I'll stop there, your honor. My second still remains.
Okay, now that's for the first item, right?
Yes.
A, placing the ballot measure on for the half cent, uh, sales tax.
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Lesser?
My comments. This will be a measure for the voters. But in order to explain why we were putting this out for a vote, we need to repeat some issues that we have been discussing at prior meetings. And it starts with the obvious. No one likes to pay more taxes. We, as policymakers, don't want to ask our voters to vote on more taxes. There is no good way to, to create a revenue stream for our city. But as you heard in our exchange earlier, we have enormous capital needs going forward without adequate residence streams to pay for them. We have to improve our revenue stream so that we have the infrastructure and the services that residents in our community have come to expect. And it, there's no good way to do it. There's no perfect way. But this is the best balance that we see to move forward, and ultimately, it's our voters that will make, uh, the decision. But I am in favor of moving forward to give our residents, our voters, the opportunity to make the decision, and for us to make our case.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Napolitano?
This is certainly isn't for Richard and I. We're not gonna be the ones that are gonna be able to spend this. It's for the next council and the councils after that. You know, we stabilized our operational, um, funding through the storm grain fee increase. So we're not subsidizing that anymore through the general fund. And because of that, operationally, we can move forward with, uh, the staffing that we need, uh, providing services to people, to the residents, to the visitors, to our businesses. But beyond that, we can't, it's not money that we can spend for the things that we wanna rebuild. And Manhattan Beach is full of aging infrastructure right now. And infrastructure is very expensive. We've got the scout house, uh, uh, senior scout house project that is now, the estimates come back, I think, two or three times what it was expected to be. Uh, we can't build that without more money. We can't build a pool without more money. We can't build wider sidewalks without more money. This might not be, any of these one projects might not be anyone's personal preference, but anything that we've been doing, we've been doing projects on a piecemeal basis, about one every ten years, drip, 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 with the funding that is either budgeted us, that we save every year in surplus from the budgets that we have. But, you know, we can't pass a bond because we still need a revenue stream to pay for that. We don't have additional dollars. No, we can't fire everybody to make that happen. I'm sorry, we're not bloated in administration or anything like that. Talked to the builders right now, who are, talked to, uh, Mr. Joseph there in the audience, who knows that, yeah, it takes time to get permits and everything else because we were understaffed for a period, and we're still playing catch-up with that because we're pirates and folks. Talked to the people who want more police on the streets, who wanted more firefighters. If we're bloated, you tell us who to fire. Tell me who to fire, because there's nobody out there right now that isn't doing a service for somebody, some group, some purpose out there. Our staff right now is overworked. Uh, they don't have, we don't have enough folks to do, uh, meet the expectations of everybody's wants and desires out there. The nature of government is that we have endless wants and limited resources to pay for them. This will create a revenue stream of five and a half billion dollars to pay for those things that we haven't been able to, to upgrade Jocelyn Center, to upgrade Manhattan Heights, to have better sidewalks, to have better streets. Now, it's a general tax because frankly, that's how you get it passed. It's a majority vote to get that passed. It's two-thirds to do a special tax to get, dedicate only to, um, public works projects. So we're not saying we're going to do that. That's my expectation. That's why I'm pushing this forward. And future councils are gonna have to hold themselves to that, but it makes sense to do this. And so I'm gonna say right now that I hope that they spend it on that because we've got fifty, sixty, seventy-year-old buildings that are just not meeting the needs of our residents. And while we're an affluent city, that doesn't mean that City Hall is affluent. We understand that nobody wants to spend more, nobody wants to be taxed more, nobody wants to waste a single penny. And we're doing our best to address that, but the simple fact is, if you wanna fix things, you gotta pay for it. And there's no other way to do that. And if you don't support this, I understand. I get it. You don't want any more taxes whatsoever. There are other things, there are other, you know, both knowing those as well, I hope. But in terms of this, just don't expect anything to get done or to get done quickly in the future. And that's not a threat, it's just a reality, because that's where we've been for the last twenty, fifty years. We can fix that. We can fix that now. We can fix that with this measure. And so I hope we move forward on it. Thank you, your honor.
Great, thank you. Um, so my comments are, um, I would like to. So my comments are, I would like to see hand in hand with this. I kind of alluded to it in my questions, is just to make sure the city is, you know, maximizing all the other forms of revenue as well, and that could be an additive effect to this. Because when you, you know, as Councilmember Montgomery's lament is that nobody comes to the budget meetings. But when you see that the capital improvement program needs all these things and money is just dribbling into it, there's got to be a steadier source. So not only do I support this, you know, this sales tax increase, but then also too, you know, maximizing things like the parking citations, like, well, we just lost one hundred and thirty-nine spaces and that means one hundred and thirty-nine meters, parking meters, but to maximize that. This is a sixty forty split. Anybody again who was here this weekend, you saw a lot of visitors. And I think we all have the phenomenon of walking down the streets and really not seeing a familiar face. Well, that's good. You know, people are coming here and enjoying, and we welcome that, and we want everybody to have a good time. But now they're, you know, with the sales tax increase is they'll be paying for some of that maintenance, they'll be paying for the road that they're driving in on, for the, you know, the amenities that they're enjoying, the pier railings, which by the way are just gorgeous, those type of things. So our visitors will help shoulder that burden. And I agree with Mr. Joseph as well in terms of, you know, making sure that we're optimizing the permitting process. The mathematics are there. We're a partner in those homes and buildings that are being built because we get a share of the parcel tax. So if you, if a developer buys a lot for, let's just say, two million dollars, and so, you know, old Joe Franklin was, you know, paying, you know, twenty-five hundred dollars a year in parcel tax there, now, now the city, now it's twenty thousand a year that's being paid, and the city's getting a proportionate share of that. That's a two million. But then the big bonanza comes when you sell that home for four or five million dollars. Now, now the parcel tax is, you know, fifty thousand dollars a year. So it behooves us, from the time value of money, is to get that process maximized so that we can go ahead and not only get a happy new homeowner here, but also, you know, get that additional revenue into, into the city. So I think if we just sort of all keep an eye on that revenue ball and, and all work towards that goal, because that triple A rating is golden. I mean, that is what you want. That gets the attention of lenders and, and that's, and that keeps our borrowing costs down.
So should we call for the question on this one? Because we have two more resolutions. Can we call for the question?
Yes. Yeah. But I just want to overall for the whole thing.
Yeah. Okay, so you can call for the question.
Can I just finish?
You can finish, it's just, you know.
Okay. All right. So that, that's the way that I, I see this process, is it's partnership with our residents, it's partnership with our businesses, and also with our visitors. So let's call for the question on item number, is it number one or number eight?
A, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's resolution number?
Thank you.
Twenty-four dash yours or eight-nine?
Twenty-four zero zero eighty-nine.
Okay, can we have a vote?
Councilmember Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilmember Napolitano? Councilmember Napolitano?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Hoer?
Yes.
Mayor Franklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Lesser?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Great, thank you.
And then I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-four dash zero zero nine zero, which provides for the filing of rebuttal arguments for the city measure.
Second.
That one shouldn't really require too much.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hoer and seconded by Councilmember Lesser.
Councilmember Lesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Yes.
Mayor Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Hoer?
Sure.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Okay. You're leaving someone else to do number three?
Well, I mean, number three requires a little bit of discussion. So, I mean, I could lead it off. I like number three and number one. But I'm agnostic, I mean, let's see. I like to keep funding local, but I think Richard would, I'm, we were talking that maybe funding isn't something good to put in the title. But I do think that resonates with people. I like MMB, Move MB Forward, because it's like, mm, B or something, I don't know. But I, I don't have, I'm just getting discussion started.
I'm for MMB.
What are you for?
MMB.
The man in a box has spoken.
I was still preferential to PMB, Protect MB. They're talking about these funds are protecting what we have. If you're talking about police, you're talking about fire, talking infrastructure, they're protecting what we have. So that's why the word Protect MB. You're going to have fifty cities out there, folks, in November using the word funding, move, whatever they're going to say. But I don't think anybody's going to say the word Protect MB anywhere in their, in their ballot designations. So I'm thinking about November, I'm thinking about today, thinking about who's going to vote and what they're going to look at in November, what they're going to read. We're going to bury presidential, congressional, senate races, you name it, the county are all going to come out pummel us with fifty mailers a day. So think of what you're going to look about, what's going to grab your attention, the word protect. That's why I'm preferential to the word protect.
The acronym's a little off-putting though.
PMB sounds good.
EMB.
Yes.
Councilmember Lesser? I'm in favor of the third option, MMB, Move MB Forward or some iteration of that. I agree with how Councilmember Montgomery's articulated the Protect MB, but all of a sudden in my mind, I'm thinking of, are we going to have to put tanks at the outside of the city because we're under some form of attack? Protect MB, are we talking about getting our pitchforks out? I'm just not sure if, how you intend the idea of Protect is necessarily going to be interpreted by all those who might read it. And that's why I'm in favor, I think, of the third option or any other iteration that you suggest, consistent with that.
No, it's tough, it's a tough one.
Free for MMB. Mr. Mayor?
I'll go for MMB as well.
Okay, so fails, talk to these four people.
That's right. The weight of the decision, the weight of, so I make a motion that we go with MM, what?
I'm, I'm just laughing.
I know, I know. Thanks, buddy. I make a motion that we, well, first of all, we had to do two, I believe, right, George? Because we, we ask for things and then the county says no, or somebody else gets it in first. So I would say first choice is number three, which is MMB, Move MB Forward. And then number, and then I'll say number two, PMB, Protect MB. So that would be our number two choice. That would be my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Can we have a vote? Oh, I'm sorry, so it's a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hoer, seconded by Councilmember Montgomery. Correct. Call for a vote? Oh, did you want to?
I'm sorry. The council can select up to three options. And on the off chance that MMB and PMB are taken, that would be good if we have a third one in place.
Then, what'd he say, KFL?
Sure. Friendly amendment.
To get to that point.
Yeah. Well, you never know.
Thank you for the clarification.
Kentucky Fried, okay.
Yeah.
What's that? Did he just curse? What? A Kentucky Fried local. That's strange, that's really strange, okay.
Kentucky Football League.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Okay.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Hoer?
You bet.
Mayor Franklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Lesser?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Okay.
All right.
Nothing else. So moving on to item number nine, consider request by Mayor Franklin and Councilmember Montgomery for a waiver.
I'm sorry, can you?
Counsel, I'm sorry. One additional thing that was mentioned in the staff report was whether council would like to, we want a direction whether the council wanted to file an argument in support of the measure, whether council would like to individually or collectively. And that would just be direction, and the city attorney and the city clerk would finalize that for them.
I, the, ah, you know, I would probably want some strategic advice. I mean, I would think it would be powerful to see, you know, one message from the council, but maybe it's more powerful to have five individual messages. I, I don't know the answer, so.
Collectively.
Collectively, yeah. I think it's collectively. Yeah. I think it's collective. There's your answer. Do we have to make a motion?
Directions get, direction is five.
All right.
There we go. Move on to item number nine. Consider request by Mayor Franklin and Councilmember Montgomery for a waiver of third-party public safety costs for the 2024 Manhattan Beach 10K.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Parks and Recreation Director Lehman?
Actually, Melissa McCollum from Parks and Rec Department will make a brief presentation.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
I think they, I think they got to, they got to turn it on or something.
There you go.
Thank you.
Still working the kinks out in our temporary quarters.
Testing, there we go. So, good evening, Mayor and City Council. As mentioned, the item before you results from a request from Mayor Franklin and Councilmember Montgomery at the City Council meeting on July sixteenth to discuss third-party expenses for the Manhattan Beach 10K. Before council's discussion and direction, we do want to provide a bit of background about the city's special events policy, as well as fee waiver requests associated with legacy special events for fiscal years 2021 to 2025. As noted in the staff report, the special events policy approved by the City Council in July of 2018 states that fee waivers for special event costs do not apply to any third-party cost incurred to support an event, and that all third-party costs incurred by the city to support an event will be billed to an event organizer. In addition, at the City Council meeting on June ninth, 2020, City Council approved fee waiver requests for legacy special events, including the Manhattan Beach 10K for five years, so again, covering from fiscal year 2021 to fiscal year 2025. The approved fee waiver for the Manhattan Beach 10K was 100% of city cost, with third-party costs being the responsibility of the event organizer. The Manhattan Beach 10K was charged $2,558 for third-party cost in 2022 and $5,159 for last year. Projected third-party costs for 2024 are not expected to exceed $6,000. The Manhattan Beach Police Department determines the amount of crowd management services that are needed for all special events in the city. Third-party costs for CSC may be reduced based on the number of volunteers that are provided by the event organizer to help staff an event. Staff plans to bring consideration a fee waiver request for legacy special events for the next five years, so for fiscal year 2026 to fiscal year 2030, to City Council at the beginning of 2025. We do definitely want to take a moment to recognize the MB 10K, the iconic race that began in 1978, has a high percentage of participation by local residents, is ranked as one of the top 100 road races in the country, and runs without a title, corporate sponsor or a paid race director. In addition, the MB 10K has made many generous community donations over the years, including financial support to help improve recreation facilities in town. Most recently, they paid for the new exercise equipment on the strand and committed $30,000 to help fund the upgraded NFC fitness court that's currently being, being installed at Polywog Park. Senior Management Analyst Linda Robb, who heads the city's Special Events Committee and IR available if you have any questions for us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Public comments? Or, I'm sorry, questions?
I had one, and maybe it's, it's to the chief, but maybe we'll start with you, Melissa. Am I right to read that the costs have increased 43% in two years?
So the, the costs have increased, and that is a mixture of public safety costs, but also public works and a little bit from community development and Parks and Rec. The biggest difference in that cost is, is some of the costs for public safety have been outsourced to the CSC.
I wanted to confirm something you mentioned in your staff report, and that is that if the 10K race committee is able to come up with volunteers to fulfill some of that role, would that reduce some of this cost that might be attributed to them?
It would, and I did confirm today that, that certainly Linda, who is the head of the special committee, and the police department, and the event organizer, would, would have that conversation and, and would come up with a staffing level that the, the police department is comfortable with, but that could be enhanced with the use of volunteers.
Okay, that's it for now, and that's for the chief. Thank you.
No?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. You, you covered that well, it's all the items that I had on there as well. So it is true, they, they don't have a paid race director, right? Everybody's strictly volunteer?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. And they've donated how much to the city?
So in a, a letter that we received as public comment, it was, you know, seven hundred, over $700,000 to the community, most recently for Parks and Rec facilities. There's a $30,000 committed for NFC, I believe eighteen to 20,000 perhaps for the, the strand equipment, and then other projects over the, the many decades.
All right, great. No further questions? Public comments? Seeing none here, have that online?
There's no request on Zoom.
Okay, so we're going to close public comments?
Before you do. As you can see, folks, for years, this race has been giving back to the community. No one doubts the dollar amount, what they've given back to us in the past. The Strand Park course was the last year, year before, and then $30,000 committed for the next one they're doing. So it's not a matter of them not having the money to do it. They look in the city, they're getting all this to us to waive $6,000, which is going to be going forward. So it's not a matter of dollar for dollar. It's the right thing, it's the right thing to do going forward. That's my motion, that we take this up and conclude it to our waiver for them going forward.
Okay.
Were you going to second it, Mr. Mayor? No, I will.
I was going to ask, I was going to ask some questions, so if you want a second, we can.
Sure, I'll second for, and for discussion.
I can't, I can't second my own.
Yeah, I was waiting for you to do it.
Well, I was waiting for questions.
No, because you can second and have questions, that's the way. I wish you would. I want you to.
Thank you. I'll second that.
The comments I'd make are this, is first of all, full disclosure, my wife and I, over the last 20, 25 years, on and off, have volunteered for the 10K race, either the beginning or the end, and we're going to do it again this year. So I guess I have an interest in this, although it's for giving up of our time. I'm very much a supporter of the 10K race and its committee, and how much it's given back to our community over all these years. The numbers and projects are really substantial. What I worry about is what this means for the other legacy nonprofit events. What do we say to our 10K race when they come to us and ask also for a waiver of their fees that we pay as a city out of costs for the public safety elements of these events? I look forward to that discussion in connection with the upcoming legacy event policy. I think the amount involved is relatively small here. I think the willingness of the race committees representative to work with the police department, to see where they can provide volunteers to offset the costs of the police department, I think are in its favor. And that's why I'm in favor of allowing this waiver. But I do think we need to be mindful of how this impacts all the other events. We have multiple events that do wonderful things for our communities, also are nonprofit, and give them time, and they also will give back to our community. So we need to just think about the precedent of this.
Your Honor, let me just take the motion before you second. I want to make sure everybody's clear what I'm talking about here. The motion is to waive third-party public safety costs for the 2024 Manhattan Beach 10K. They reset in '25, they go all over again. That's, the only two legacy events are, folks, 10K, Hometown Fair. They've been there since 1987, that's the minimum year, 87 or more, they continue every year past that point. That makes them a legacy event. So, we should be glad that we have two that have been going on this long. This is one of the two. That's my motion.
Great.
Is that still your second, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, and then I'll second that again. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, so we're ready for the vote?
The Councilmember, Napolitano. Councilmember Napolitano.
Oh, I thought I asked him. Did I ask you, Steve?
Let's vote.
Okay, let's vote.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Lesser?
Yes.
Mayor Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Good. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you for bringing that forward.
Yes, of course. Pleasure. I don't, I don't want them to throw things at me when I'm running.
That doesn't guarantee, uh, yeah.
Is that a quid pro quo? Okay, item number L. City Council requests and reports, including AB 1, 2, 3, 4?
Not for me, Your Honor.
Anybody? Okay. Item number 11. Request by Councilmember Montgomery and Councilmember Napolitano to consider waste management requests for an extraordinary rate increase and modifications.
So, we are looking for a third vote to bring this forward.
Can I ask what it would be so bringing forward? We're going to investigate why or do a little back and forth figuring out why? Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll bring their request forward to you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do it.
There's your third vote.
There's a third vote?
I mean, it's, it's just to bring it forward.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So, I, item M, future agenda items? Seeing none? We can go to the City Manager Report?
Now, the end is near. So, I face the final curtain.
Not that final.
Wow.
I am, but.
Wow.
In deference to that song in Old Blue Eyes, I just wanna say, hopefully, I did it our way, not my way. I felt as though I was working certainly for the council, wanted to do it your way and adopt that and make it our way, the Manhattan Beach way. So, with that, I, I, you know this, you know, I've, I've been here, I've attended probably 1,000 council meetings. I am so appreciative and so grateful for the opportunities the community has given me, that all of you have given me these past years, and I know you're in good hands. The department head team will do great work, continue to do great work. Tallin will do a fantastic job as acting, but I just wanna say thank you. I really appreciated it. I can't think of a better way to go out, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
I'll stand for that.
We have you too. You're one of a kind, Bruce. Didn't know you could sing. That was awesome.
That was a song.
Actually, I heard it. I think, I think you can.
Old Blue Eyes and Blue Shirt, that's why I didn't change clothes.
I was gonna say, don't give up your day job, but you are.
Too late.
Well done. And, and a song from City Attorney.
How can I follow that? Although, he did sound better than the person at the Polywog Park.
That was pretty good.
Oh.
Ouch.
Yeah, so Bruce is gonna be sorely missed both as a great city manager and as a friend, and that's my only report today.
Okay, great, thank you. And, uh, that's it? And so, we are going to adjourn. Help me here, please.
No, actually.
This time, we're going to go back into closed session.
Go back into closer session.
Yeah, close, yeah, it's closed.
Okay, so we're gonna adjourn to, back to closed session.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to adjourn our special meeting.
We're going to reconvene, yeah. We're going to reconvene the special meeting.
Reconvene the special meeting.
And I'll make an announcement.
And you'll make an announcement.
So the city council went into closed session to discuss five separate items. With respect to items A, B, and D, the city council gave direction. With respect to item C, by a three to two vote with council members Montgomery and Napolitano voting no, the city council gave direction to special counsel. And with respect to item E, that's the city manager item, the city council gave direction to the city attorney and also to our city manager recruitment firm, Bob Murray and Associates.
Thank you.
At this time, it'd be appropriate to adjourn the special meeting.
Okay, so we're going to adjourn the special meeting.
And then reconvene the regular meeting.
Reconvene in our regular meeting, and now we're going to adjourn to 4:30 on August 20th. Thank you.